Happy Birthday to you all. Happy Birthday to you.
Give some tell us about races. So. Confessionally. For some objections.
Yeah. Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just now.
to order, will the court please call the law?
Commissioner Wilder?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
We're all present in council board. And we'll be back if we see our people here. And we're glad you're going to have a nice weekend today. First item on the agenda, citizen comment. Now, before you operate this into the work session without any citizens coming, just come up and have a seat in front of us here and have a discussion of what you want to talk about. And if you'd like to, if it's possible, to make a presentation, you've got five minutes. Maybe the commission would like to engage in conversation with you, then that's another matter. So if you would, you make the presentation, try to keep it that way. Okay, do we have any citizens who can make a comment? Okay. Next on the agenda is the city manager's staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. We will ask staff to have reports. Chief Posit, you have a report?
Uh, yes. City manager had asked that we all give you an update on tomorrow's events for the inauguration, what insurance the department's doing. So our involvement in fire EMS is minimal compared to some of the previous inaugurations. This is a good thing, because as we all know, it's kind of scaled back this year. But we're going to have, as usual, we have a command ambulance at the command post, the state police command post up at the Capitol. Historically, we usually have at least a couple of calls during the parade and the DMS going on up there. We'll also have two gators roaming throughout the parade route for any EMS call that we may get. Assistant chief's room and obviously the command post also. So we'll have six or seven people working over time tomorrow to cover these events. The parade march, or the march rather at the Capitol, the things place the degree in, we'll also have an ambulance stand by there. Historically, again, we always have one if you need to follow them in the steps, so we'll be prepared for that. And that's pretty much our involvement from fire EMS standpoint for tomorrow. Anything else that's going on, all the ball and the swearing ceremonies, that's going to be a call for ambulance sympathy rather than standing by. So we're trying to keep this scale down as possible. The other thing I did want to mention is I have personnel in Florida as we speak doing the final inspection on the two new ambulances which have been delayed a month. But the last report I got is they're supposed to hit the road tonight, will be on our way to practice. Which is a very good thing, because over the weekend, we had three ambulances go out of service. So we already retired one back in September because it wasn't worth fixing. So out of our fleet of seven frontline, or frontline and reserve ambulances, over the weekend, we were down four. So it was a pretty drastic situation, but thanks to the garage staff, they got two of them back up and running today. So if soon we can get these two new ambulances in service on the road, pretty much better. The other point I wanted to make though was throw in a plug for the upcoming budget. We got in this condition because of the budget flows that we've been having through the years, whereas we used to replace one ambulance a year, so that as one, you know, fit the best, we always had a new one right behind it. And we haven't been able to do that for three years now. So we will have to look at getting back on that schedule and plenty of minutes on the new ambulance on the forthcoming schedule. Just a heads up. What happened to the E M, when you retired them? You get sold for surplus auction. And usually, another ambulance agency will buy it just for the box, most of the chassis, usually the one out with the engine and transmission and everything. And they put it on another, better shaped chassis. Or someone may buy it and ship the box off and just use it as a farm truck or something like that. But historically, we sell them. When you told the commission, Commissioner Wilder?
I'll just note that we held a series of kind of open forums for city employees a couple of months ago to express concerns. I think we were expecting to hear lots of feedback on, you know, promotion policy and liability pay, et cetera. Pretty struck by all the feedback we've got requesting us to terminate camp, to do a better job, and the city police.
Right. And again, I have to give the garage a lot of credit for the maintenance that they do. As an example here, our lowest mileage vehicle right now has about 65,000 miles on it. And the highest mileage is 120, 125. So they've gotten their money's worth out of them, they've saved their life, but it is really important to get back on that regular routine and leave the places good.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Barris, would you please tell us the park's involvement with the inauguration?
Yes, as most of these events go, we are support services. We're lending them some golf carts and some gators. We have six gators that we're using, four for our police and two as backup for the inaugural committee. They've leased some carts that we're letting them store in our downtown building. We put bleachers on the El Cephalo lawn, we've hauled recycling up and down Broadway, and we have restrooms available on Broadway and Ann Street. So and tomorrow, our Broadway building will be open, and myself, Jim McCarty, Tom Roberts, and Mike Smoltenberg will be on duty.
Do you need, can I ask you a question?
Chief, where are we? Come forward, please. I don't want to pray for a minute, so I don't know if we can have this thing or not. Maybe by tomorrow afternoon, we'll figure this out. Now, do you want me to speak about the inauguration plans?
I know you can't tell us about all the security or you'd have to shoot us, but...
Well, let's state police handle that. We're handling the traffic points, parade route and security along the route, but we're going to have basically our department mobilized. Whoever's not working the parade has to work afterwards, so we have about three-fourths of our department on duty tomorrow, starting at 6:00 A.M. Street department's already put up no parking signs. We had a couple of fires that we put out with that. Everybody goes a little wild when they see no parking signs, so. So far, so good. Major Jeff Abrams is the detail commander. He's done a great job coordinating the state police and the other entities that run this. Of course, the street department put up about 750 no parking signs, of course.
Interesting.
Yeah, exactly. Officers went door to door with the explorers yesterday in South Frankfurt with a brochure that we developed to let the people of Shelby and Steel Street know that we're going to be taking their parking and why. So if anyone had any questions, they could talk to an officer face to face. So that's about where we are in the inauguration.
Commissioner Wilder?
I know the parking's going to be at a premium, South Frankfurt and downtown, and the folks can expect it to be difficult to get around tomorrow. Could you confirm that there aren't going to be any sections of South Frankfurt and downtown that are essentially fully quarantined in terms of automobile access?
Right. The east side of Second could be accessed by 420, the west side through Second Street. So if you can make your way through the back streets, you're okay. Shelby Street is going to be used for parking buses for vans. Steel Street is going to be used for any overflow. Usually vans will come in in either school buses or charter buses, and they'll bring the box trucks in for their equipment. So usually, we put the equipment trucks on Steel Street. But all of the side streets, the cross streets, will be open for parking or whatever. But I encourage anyone who's, you know, has friends coming from out of town to use the shuttle services, transit's been great. They're going to be running shuttles, I think, up to about 1:00 in the morning, so they're going to have a full day also. But typically, what happens, particularly with out of towners, if somebody needs to get around, we'll find them a way to get there if we have to take them. We try to show a little hospitality on this day. Under staff reports, oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to thank you for sending officers around door to doors out of Frankfurt. I know there's probably been a lot of neighbors being there, all the times that state police officers, nothing to be concerned, you film that, it's upcoming, very proactive.
Can we do other staff questions?
Yes, I have a couple of things.
Right now, the city is in the employee phase of the United Way campaign. I don't have any pledge cards to leave with you, but if you're interested, we have several sessions this week at city hall and the various departments. So far, fire sanitation have been head up and have been very generous. Last year, we had an increase in participation, I hope to increase that even further. But one thing I'd like to add and thank all the department heads, including the city manager, who donated either gift cards or gifts of money to go toward gift cards for drawings for employees who participated in the United Way. So kind of a little incentive, but that shows the support by the leadership, and I appreciate that. And then one other thing, as far as the agenda goes, if I could add something. The last meeting, we declared 12 cars as surplus amongst other property, but I have a 13th vehicle to add to the list. And what we are going to do with these vehicles, we've got the price from Paul Miller Ford, a quote from them, on trading in those for the price of a new outfitted cruiser. And the difference between the 12 cars in various states of disrepair and the 13th car that will be on this next agenda. The difference between the price of a new cruiser outfitted, which is $21,653, they're going to give us a $15,808 allowance for these cars, which is about $460 a car. Usually at auction, we get about $750, so get a pretty good deal. For total of a total commitment of $8,000. So I'll be asking the commission to approve the purchase of, and I have to ask, even though it's $8,000, because the value of the property is over $20,000, I have to get commission approval. But I'll ask for approval of that, and the money will be taken out of the asset forfeiture fine. So it's not a hit against the general budget, it's extra money that we have. So we'll get one extra cruiser anyway. So I'll have that by noon Wednesday. And we also closed the application process for police officer. We have 120 applicants for positions. Right now, we have four open, so some good candidates in there, some people done to us, some people have worked here before and gone off, so we're excited about it.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Padward, Chief gave part of your report, but he has something to add. We talked about the transit service tomorrow and we talked about the replacing the signs around them for inauguration. Anything to add to the inauguration? I know you might have some other items.
We'll be out assisting with barrels tomorrow with the traffic, shutting down all the streets with our street department. So that's our main function, which is kind of support. That's going to cover five items, give you an update on some current projects. We had a beautiful day today, and our roof contractor was not at work. We called him and found out when that project could be finished up, and he said he'll be here tomorrow and Wednesday to finish up the roof project, so the fire department will be happy to hear that they'll be hopefully done Wednesday. We awarded a bid last month for Myrtle Avenue. We're relining a storm drain, a 72-inch storm drain, and that project will start January 18. And that project, it's a deep cut under the road, and we're going to reline the pipe because the bottoms eat out, and so to save the road, we've chosen to reline the pipe rather than dig up the street. And so that project will start January 18. Today, I was out on Wilkinson Trail. Contractor was finishing rolling the project of DVA, and after the parade tomorrow, we'll be paving tomorrow and Wednesday. So hopefully, we'll be finished up at the blacktop on Wednesday on Wilkinson Trail. We had a public hearing today in public transit, and the news there is we have a grant that was $175,000 less than we requested, and Betty, our transit superintendent, recommended in the public hearing that we park the trolley for January, February, and March, and then resume in April. That's our lowest ridership those months, with the history center not being open. Thought that that would be probably a good recommendation. So it will not be running January, February, and March on the fixed routes, but we will combine deviated routes for special occasions during those months. And lastly, the carts and the bags have been ordered. We've had a preliminary meeting with Toder. They will be here on December 19, getting carts into our sanitation building, putting the wheels and everything together, and start rolling those out to the residents. And the six overflow bags, the recycling information, and the cart care, all will be in a plastic bag inside the cart, so as they go out to all the residents, they'll receive their bags. And the public education on what, how to recycle and what can go in the cans, so all that will be in the delivery of the cans. We've notified all the apartment complexes over eight units and let them know they will no longer be eligible for service. So they've received a letter in the mail, so just to let them on notice, they'll have some time to get dumpster service taken care of. And one question, I guess. We talked a little bit at one of the meetings that if people were not paid in full of their garbage be, do we withhold the bags or the carts in delivery of those items? And we have time to do either, whatever you all want us to do. We can withhold cans, we can withhold bags, or both if they are not paid in full, or we can go ahead and distribute everything and hold back, still first, the bags. So just wanted to bring that issue up before we start rolling everything out. Who should walk?
Without objection, we had garbage building issues on our agenda today for discussion. I think it's probably something that warrants a little discussion, but an objection.
That's fine, we can hold out and discuss that later. I think that was it.
Any other comments or questions?
Am I correct that the trolley will be in the inauguration parade? Is that correct?
Yes.
And aren't the former governor somebody riding one?
I don't know the specifics, but who's riding the trolley?
Thank you. And I want to recognize Joy, since we're talking about inauguration, so okay, we'd like to recognize, since we're talking about inauguration, Joy is kind enough to be here tonight, and she's a very busy lady between today and tomorrow evening. We're going to let her talk about the inauguration also.
Well, I first want to say thank you to the city, absolutely every department in the city. It doesn't make any difference who I call and ask for, they jump through hoops, and I am so appreciative that we had a call from KSU, the state community, that they couldn't get their gospel choir down to the history center tomorrow because their vehicles had been yanked for other things, and called Betty, and she made arrangements to get it on deeply. Appreciative of that. And I would also like to say that I certainly concur with Jeff and Betty's decision to pull the trolley for those three months. I think that's a very wise move. The real piece of, this is the whole happenings for tomorrow, but the main thing, thing for which we're responsible is the reception at the Kentucky Historical Society from 3:30 to 5:00. And I will be recognizing you all, so I hope that you all will be there at, if you could come at about 3:30, it would be helpful, because we're going to actually, we're a little bit iffy on the exact times, because a lot of it depends on exactly when the governor, the first way to get there. But if you all can be there, and you'll let me know if you are or are not. But what we'll start with, we arrange for music. We have the gospel ensemble from KSU. I really wanted someone from KSU to be represented in the entertainment. And then Joanna Hay and Jeff Ellis are going to be doing the violin and the guitar, and we'll be playing My Old Kentucky Home as soon as the state policeman calls me and tells me the governor's getting out of the car. And then we will have, I'm going to do some recognitions, I'm going to recognize, I know Secretary Sparrow's going to be there, several of the others will just have to kind of, if you see anybody there tomorrow that you think I'll be recognized, if you can get to me before I make recognitions, I'm really... Commissioner May, I know you've been around a long time. Mayor Graham, I would appreciate it. Anybody you see that, anybody sees that I should recognize with you, but you know, I appreciate that very much. And the county officials. And then Mayor Graham and Judge Collins will be making the ceremonial presentation of the white cake and your biscuits. And then after that, if they're, depending on what time they get there, Jeff and Joanna will go ahead and play more. And then the Frankfurt children singers are going to close up. So we've got college students and children and a traditional group line. So I hope that, I hope that I've done a good job to represent you all, I've made sure that I swear everything that was in print, the city of Frankfurt, got good billing. So if you've got any suggestions, still have my computer in the car, so.
Just want to thank you for all of our work. I know people tell me, several people tell me, how many hired you extremely well, and how hospitable you are, who you did work with, and tell me.
It's my privilege to represent all of you. I do hope this is my last inauguration before I retire. Are you guys planning to see you tomorrow? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you very much. With your permission, we'll go back to staff reports. We're kind of chugging around about, we're being flustered. Mr. Scott, you have anything to report?
Yes, sir.
Randy Johntine, you have anything on human resources, the air?
Real quick, and ours is still part, of course, dispatch, we're kind of in the background, and obviously whatever affects the police or fire EMS affects us as well, because it goes through us. What we do is we put like the police and the deputies over onto a separate frequency and run it as if it's a separate department. Because with all this going on down here, we've still got the entire city and county to run its business as usual everywhere else, except for down here. So obviously, we have somebody that monitors and coordinates that as a separate frequency, so that's the preparation that we do, again, that's in the background. And on a personal note, the rumor has it, there's 11 days, 11 workdays left, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Plan and codes, Rob, you have anything to report?
Well, maybe. With Gary not being here tonight, I know that you all would ask our department to do walkthrough on some of the buildings, or all of the city buildings. Well, we have gone through this building, and that is the only one we've actually right now had time for. And we will have a report to you all. We've got about 20 pages of violations just on this building. Now, we hope that once the roofer gets done, that'll take care of some of the problems that we have in the fire department, because that seems to be the biggest area where we've got some serious problems. And we've run into a few ADA issues and electrical stuff and that sort of thing, but we want you to know. I know that Gary said you all wanted it by Christmas, there's just no way we can get all of them done by Christmas. And there was one thing that I was going to ask you. Are you all wanting us to go through like the museum, the Capitol museum, and all those type of places, or do you just want the city administrative buildings?
I just think city administrative buildings.
Okay, because me and Mr. Parrish had talked about that the other day, and he wasn't really under, you know, what the impression that you all just want that done or what. So that gives us a better guideline to go on. We will, we hopefully will have that to you all within the first month or so of the next year, but I think it's just been, it's a big ordeal to go through that and get all that done, but we'll have it to you.
Is that, Mr. Hayden wants to add his other, you all agree with that, to make sure that?
Okay, yes. Sure. Yes, sir. That is correct, just administrative.
My sense is that the city should hold its own property at the same standards as we hold private property owners, too.
Right. Well, the thing about like the Capitol museum, you know, it was completely renovated back just a while back before it opened up and stuff, so I don't think there's going to be any issues there. But if you all prefer for us to go through all of them, that is what we will do.
I'm glad we're at least doing what we all heard.
Okay, so you want us to just start with the administrative stuff and then, and then if you decide you want us to do those, we'll be more than happy to oblige you and take care of that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
For your department?
Yes, ma'am.
Parking is downtown tomorrow. I haven't seen an ordinance that says that you can't have people park in, I have a driveway backyard, could I allow citizens or visitors to park there?
We, there are special circumstances that we allow that, and you know, actually, there's a 25... there's a 24-hour grace period in there. It's what is written into the ordinance. And so, yes, ma'am, you can do that, and I don't think anybody's going to say a thing about that.
I mean, I just got some people parked there before.
Sure, yes, ma'am. And yeah, and I say that should not be a problem.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we'll, you are, we'll let you know about that. But no, you should be fine.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I failed to mention, in tomorrow's parade, we'll also have our 1927 fire truck, antique fire truck in there. You may have seen it at the Christmas parade. It's just interesting enough that it's Frankfort's first motorized bumper. It's fully restored and gathered excellent conditions, so look for that.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? Take conclusions of staff reports.
Now, we have some discussion of the cases.
If anybody had opportunity to look at the agenda or any additions, comments?
Commissioner Wilder? We got questions. Item 7.3 on the consent calendar references, it references 35 acres that are, there's not access between these 35 acres and the rest of Capitol View Park, but it's essentially associated with the large Capitol View Park property. And so item 7.3, the consent agenda, is a lease agreement between ourselves and a farmer for a five-year term. And I had heard that we do lease out this 35 acres for, you know, to private, for private fund use, but I've never actually seen the terms.